Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Evelyn, can you please do roll call?
Trustee Weekly.
Present.
Trustee McAvoy.
Trustee Wells.
Vice President Lawson.
Here.
President Marcus.
Here. Oh, yes. So, reported on closed session. Um, for May 24th, 2023, we heard from our attorneys and we are moving forward with their recommendation. And now again, welcome everyone to, to another Redwood City School District Board meeting. Um, it's really nice to see a full house today. Um, for those that need interpretation, para los que necesitan interpretación al español, por favor, llame al 978-990-5137 y presione 8377041 y el signo de número para la contraseña. If you're speaking to the board, um, I'm sorry. The public is encouraged to speak to the board on issues of concern, whether or not the issues is or are on the agenda. To address the board, please complete a speaker's card, which is available at the entrance. And you can give it to Evelyn here on my left. If you wish to speak to the board on a subject listed on the agenda, we will, we will be, you will be called to the podium at the time that the item is being considered by the board. If the item is not on the agenda, you will be called to the podium during oral communication. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person, per topic, unless otherwise noted. And then for changes or additions to the agenda, please know that consent items are voted on simultaneously with one motion and are not debated or discussed by the board. But if a public, um, person needs to discuss an item, please let us know with the speaker's card before we change the agenda so we can keep it out of consent items. And again, welcome. And are there any, um, changes to the agenda?
Do we want to move the recognitions up?
Yeah.
Yes.
For the
Before our
Sounds good.
Yeah. Okay, so we would like to move item 14.1 before oral communication. And are there any other changes? No? Okay. Thank you. Can I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. And Evelyn, do we have any oral communication?
Uh, no, no.
I'm sorry. We are moving on to item 14.1, which we've just moved up before oral communication. And
Thank you. So this is a great month for Redwood City and for public schools around the country as it is our Employee Recognition Month of various classifications. And so tonight is very apropos, uh, to recognize our outstanding employees for their dedication. And so there is an item I'm going to be reading tonight for those that are online and those in our audience. We do have representatives from our employee groups here tonight with us, which is very exciting. Thank you so much for making the time tonight to represent the different classifications. And so as I read each of the categories, classified, certificated, and management, if you could just stand and be recognized here in person, and those at home or on the call, please also know you're being recognized as well. So the Redwood City School District and Board of Trustees would like to recognize our district employees for their hard work and dedication to the students and families of Redwood City. For our classified members, please stand if you'd like. Thank you. Here in the audience, classified employees are the backbone and support of our district. From the groundskeepers, administrative secretaries, office staff, custodians, bus drivers, food service employees, librarians, nurses, paraeducators, and instructional assistants to all the other classifications, these employees keep our schools running smoothly. Facilities maintained and students fed at every site, every day. Our CSD's classified employees support the education of more than 6,500 students. The tireless efforts of each of our classified employees allow our students, families, and staff to thrive each and every day. We would like to acknowledge the work of our classified employees tonight and extend our gratitude and appreciation for all they have done and will continue to do in the future. Thank you so much. For our certificated teachers that are here in the audience, thank you, and at home. Certificated teachers are responsible for the instruction and learning of our students. Whether our teachers are directly teaching students or our coaches to support roles, their influence on the success of our students is critical. A teacher makes a million decisions every day and is expected to be an incredible and consistent role model for students so they can take risks in their learning and show how to model good relationships and friendships through actions, tone of voice, and encouragement. They transfer the rigorous, excuse me, the empowerment of learning to students every minute of every day. Their consistency of practice to make school a joyful, inclusive, and rigorous place to learn takes dedication, focus, and planning. Teachers can also take on the role of nurse, parent, mediator, among many other things. We want to take the formal opportunity to thank all of our teaching staff for their continuous work every day to further the success of our students. Thank you. And last but not least, our management group. You could stand here tonight and those in the audience.
Our, another management group.
Thank you. Our management team is a remarkable group. The ability to run departments, programs, and school sites and to keep many balls in the air at one time while moving forward with our goals and objectives takes finesse and skill. Managing students' progress and success, family communication and education, and personnel matters takes time and coordination for a seamless experience for all stakeholders. There is so much behind the scenes that many people are not aware of, such as monitoring situations, mediations, goal planning and implementation, and support for families that take so much coordination. From our directors, community school coordinators, lead nurses, administrative assistants, site administrators, occupational therapists, school psychologists, coordinators, and managers, we thank you for all that you do for our CSD. Thank you so much for standing. The collective effort needed by all of our staff to raise our children, our students, and to give guidance to our families is remarkable. Thank you for all make, all for making our CSD a great place to work and learn. The Redwood City School District would like to show our appreciation for these employees' dedication with this board acknowledgement tonight. Thank you so much for coming down tonight as well. We appreciate your time. And for those in the audience, thank you again.
Thank you. Um, again, everyone that is here and on Zoom, and even the ones who are not connected, everyone matters. Um, so I'm going to open it up for my colleagues if they want to start making any comments. Question.
Yeah, I'm proud of that bit.
Sorry, one more time, I'll try again. Um, I'm glad that we're taking the time to recognize the hard work that each and every one of you do. I mean, I really appreciate it every single day. Um, when my kids were in here, when my neighbors' kids are in there, or even when kids that I don't really know, it really makes a difference to our whole community that the work that our classified or certificated and our management staff accomplishes every day. And frankly, the challenges that you have to face every day and overcome, um, it's, uh, it's hopefully gratifying work, but it's definitely appreciated work, uh, and thank you so much for it. Um, this is a great time to do it during our Employee Recognition Month, and I want to especially acknowledge because of the week that we're in, the Classified Employees for Classified Employee Week. Um, I appreciate everything that you do across all the different, um, job descriptions that, uh, that you cover. Um, you're really part of the heartbeat of the school and making sure that the school day and beyond runs smoothly for not just the students and families and the other staff here, but, um, actually the whole community that, that has the chance to enjoy, say, like our grounds, um, on after hours. So thank you.
What Mike said. Thank you so much. Really appreciate all you do for our students and for my two sons. So thank you.
Um, I'll just, uh, yeah, ditto that. I really appreciate all of the hard work everyone here does. Um, the work that you do is so impactful, um, for our students and our families here. Um, everything you do, um, all of the different, um, jobs that, um, are represented by our classified, our certificated, our management. Um, we can't serve our students and our families. We can't educate our students without the work that you do. Um, it, from janitors to food service, to librarians, to teachers, to, um, you know, everyone working in management, it just is so important for our district and for our families. So thank you for your commitment to our families, to our district. Um, thank you for all the hard work that you've put in, um, especially over the last few years. Um, just really appreciate all of you here that are here tonight, that are online, and everyone who couldn't make it too.
Great, thank you. Um, and again, I'm going to say, just like they said, but I am, um, going to read something that I wrote. Um, I didn't want to forget and miss anyone. So my words to all of you is it takes a village, and I believe that we can all agree. The Redwood City is one awesome community. You, we all need each other. Teachers need paraprofessionals, office assistants, administrators need each other, support and office staff. Most everyone needs for maintenance, transportation, business, IT, child nutrition, et cetera. Students need their family and teachers, friends, and school staff. From welcoming students and parents, or even new employees, a smile goes a long way. When you feel safe and valued, you tend to make others feel the same way. And for that, we are thankful. To everyone behind the scenes, thank you for all your hard work. You all make someone else's job lighter by assisting, sharing, and being the best you can, and especially a team player. Keep being you and know we care. Um, and then one thing that I do want to say as Classified Week just happened, I do want, I, we appreciate everyone. I appreciate everyone. But please know for the classified staff, I am one of you. I am a classified staff in a neighboring district, so I do know what we are all about. And again, we all need each other. So thank you very much. Um, again, and everybody is very much appreciated. Um, we couldn't do this work without our kids, without our teachers, our classified employees, our administrators, um, our wonderful board of members, because we could all agree. I could agree that we, you know, and Dr. Baker, of course. So, um, kudos to all of you, and we are very, very much appreciated. Thank you. And then for those of you that are here, you guys are welcome to stay for the meeting, but you guys can walk, uh, walk out at any time. Um, and then so now, um, I have oral communication.
No oral communication.
No oral, okay, great. Thank you. And so moving on to item nine, Bond Program Consent Items. If there are no questions, can I please get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Ellie. Um, there are no action items, so moving on to 11, School and Community Report, Community Schools and Expanded Learning Program Board Report.
That's it. Thank you. And so, um, thank you, Liz. So good evening, school board members. Superintendent Baker, Deputy Superintendent Wendy Kelly, Assistant Superintendent Liz Wolfe, Chief Business Officer Rick Edson, and Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent Evelyn Campos. Really helped me get all this together. Thank you. Um, I want to, uh, thank you all for providing our team this opportunity to share our work with all of you and for all the support you have provided over many years for our community school program. I would like to start this evening by acknowledging our presenters. We have a few. You can tell we're all dressed alike, but, um, I would like to first welcome our community school coordinators. We have Elsa Iceboro, Elizabeth Calderon, Cynthia Cardona, Ichelle Baltazar, and Jose Luna. We have with us also our district's Extended Learning Coordinator Enrique Calderon. We have our district's Community Liaison, Michelle Ramon. And we have two of our community partners, Jocelyn Ariaga. She is with Upstream, and we have Leila Oak from College Advising Prep. So we have a big team tonight to present to you. And we want to also acknowledge that two of our community school coordinators could not be here this evening. Lizette Hernandez has school, and Veronica Hernandez Lobos got sick. So we wanted to also acknowledge them. We gave to each of you, I hope you received it, a book called Courageous Conversations. We want to share this with you because it will be part of our book study as a team that complements our work with SSS to, um, around equity. So we wanted to share that with you. I also want to send a, a shout out to any partners and staff that are with us tonight. I know we have one in the audience, Ofelda, and some that are online. So we appreciate everyone here. And we hope that through this presentation to demonstrate the depth of the community school work in our district. We also want to point out that our presentation tonight mirrors the backbone of the community school model as it was a collaborative effort between staff, families, community partners, and students. Wait, oh, I have to click it. What do I do? Yes. There. Did it work? Okay. Um, so here's a quote that we believe encompasses the work of the community schools. And so I'll just give a couple of seconds for everyone to read that. So as you all know, there's a long history of community schools in our district. I want to just share a brief description with you. The community school model is designed to transform a school into a place where educators, local community members, families, and students work together to strengthen conditions for student learning and health, healthy development by identifying needs and building on community strengths in order to remove barriers to learning. The Redwood City School District has a long history of community school work, and I was here then, back then, 25 years to be exact. This work began as a tri-collaborative effort between the city of Redwood City, County of San Mateo, and the Redwood City School District. And this tri-collaborative continues to date. We have also come full circle in our work with the John Gardner Center. As the John Gardner Center were, they were with us at the beginning of this work. They provided that, they provided assistance with research information, training around the community school model, and helped us to really roll out what this would look like in our district. And in a bit, you're going to hear some more information about how we are continuing that partnership and what we'll be doing in the future. So I also want to acknowledge that, um, in the 2122 school year, we expanded from four community schools to seven. And we're going a little further next year. So, um, I would like to now bring up Jose for the next part of our presentation.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Jose Luna. I'm the Community School Coordinator at Adelanta Selby. Just a little history of what, uh, just a little background of what makes community schools a little unique are the four pillars that we use to guide our work. Um, these are the, the combination of these four pillars help, together help us create conditions necessary for our students to succeed. Um, the four pillars being Integrated Student Services, Expanded and, I'm sorry, Expanded and Enriched Learning Time and Opportunities, Active and Community, Active Family and Community Engagement, Collaborative Leadership and Practices. Um, these are the, the pillars that we use in combination when we are building our work and, um, across our schools, across our districts. And, um, I will now pass it over to my colleague, Ichelle.
Thank you, Jose. Good evening, everyone. So I will be sharing about the first pillar, which is Integrated Student Services. Um, on the screen, there is a quote that was lifted from one of our parent surveys. And as you're reading the quote, I would like to share that in order to effectively build on the strengths of our community and address barriers, we must provide services and partners that are seamlessly integrated into the school community. So, Community School Coordinators work on coordinating support programs to address barriers to learning. The Community School Coordinator works with the different stakeholders at the site to identify site-based needs, coordinate service delivery, and ensure smooth integration. The goal is to close any service gaps that may exist. Um, highlighted on the screen are a few services that the Community School Coordinators facilitate through the Community School Model, which are academics, mental health, services, sports, expanded learning, and safety net services, to name a few. Um, at the top, you will see, um, that there is a link of partners and and the areas they address that exist across the community school sites and throughout the district. Next, we will be highlighting the Life Moves Program at Kennedy Middle School. So I will now turn it over to Jocelyn, who is the Upstream Coordinator.
Hi, everyone. Oh, sorry. Good afternoon. My name is Jocelyn Ariaga, and I am the Upstream Coordinator. Um, I'll be talking a little bit of our program. So the partnership between Upstream and CDI, uh, Chance Segway Initiative began as a response to the increasing amount of families who are living doubled up and at risk or experiencing homelessness due to loss of housing, job loss, or any other economic hardships. I work closely with Elizabeth Calderon, uh, to increase identification of youth and the families that fall under that umbrella. Um, and the way that happens is that we review the referral information, look at the family's immediate needs, and then we connect them to a case manager, um, where they then collaborate and create a case plan that's specifically tailored to their needs, um, where we also address their strength and needs, um, in order to improve their housing stability. At the end, we hope that families are able to establish community and get connected to the appropriate resources. And I'll be going over some data. So since Upstream launched in January of 2020, uh, we have served 118 families, totaling to over 400 individuals being impacted by our case management services, and most of them are youth. Of those 118 families, 26 are currently enrolled in our program. Uh, we have had 94 families that have worked and completed their program, and out of those 94, 78 have improved their housing stability, which is about 83%. And the way that we kind of look at the housing stability markers is if they have been able to, um, gain employment, um, increase their income through employment and non-employment or, um, avenues, if they have been able to stabilize their housing, um, if they were able to possibly connect to rental assistance, or they were able to overall, um, gain, uh, community resources that were, uh, able to improve their stability. Um, and through this approach, we look to continue to increase identification of these families at our school partners, um, our partnering schools, and hope to can also continue to provide holistic services to our community. Thank you. And I'll pass it over to Enrique.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I have the pleasure of being the district's Expanded, uh, Learning Opportunities Coordinator and working amongst the, the Community School Coordinators and with Michelle really closely. Um, and so I'm going to highlight a few, um, things that we've accomplished through the Expanded Learning Program this year. Um, right here on your screen, you'll see a quote off of one of the students who's part of the hip hop dance class at TAFT, and their enjoyment in showing how that has really improved their emotional, um, support throughout their extended day as well. And so just a little bit around the growth of the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. Uh, so we've gone from three after-school program providers to nine this year. And so that's been supporting, um, nine different school sites as well as three community centers here in Redwood City, which is now supporting about 1,600 students in expanded day programming. And so in terms for next year, we're looking to grow on that and to go to 10, uh, 10 school sites as well as four community centers, which will bring that total up to about 2,000 students who will be enrolled in an extended day program. Um, additionally, besides that, we've been adding specialized programs to the after-school, uh, programs as well. And so some of those have been music, so kids are learning ukulele, piano, uh, for the middle schoolers, there's rock band. Um, there's martial arts classes as well as hip hop dance classes. Um, and then we've also added some services that have been really needed. Um, for example, we've added transportation, mental health clinicians that stay through the extended day programs, um, as well as tutoring and one-on-one aids for our students in special ed, um, so that they can participate and access the programs as well. Um, and so additionally, working with the Community School Coordinators, it's been really important having them at the site because they really are the bridge at the school sites that help transition students and families, um, from the instructional day to the extended day learning programs. All right, and now I'll pass it on to Cynthia.
Thank you, Enrique. Hi, my name is Cynthia, and it's great to see you all again. I am the Community School Coordinator at MIT. And today I'm going to be expanding a bit more on, um, our third pillar, which is Active Family and Community Engagement. As community schools reprioritize, uh, the meaningful and ongoing engagement of our families and community members. We do this by establishing systems and structures that support engagement with various activities, many of which you heard about in our individual presentations, um, in the past board meetings. Thankfully, um, our role allows us to spend more and more time with our communities. And together, we've seen that family engagement is more than just attending school events or walking through our family centers. Actually, for us, it's about families feeling welcomed. It's about them feeling supported and valued. It's about each member feeling heard and seen as an essential partner of, of the school community. And as a part of our work as a community school team, we've been working hard in creating a collaborative definition of what family engagement is and a rubric to help us, uh, measure our successes and areas of growth. In doing so, we've, um, spent some time, uh, developing a system to support some of our least-reached families. And today, we want to spend some time highlighting them, our international families formerly known as newcomers. Why the change of term, you may ask? Great question. Well, it's because they're not just new to our country. Um, they're families that are coming from all over the world with different backgrounds, different languages, and different cultures. They are coming, uh, with us with different reasons of needing to be here and most definitely with such unique and individual stories of their journey here. It is then when we sit down to listen to those stories that we're able to begin to build relationships and build trust, not just with the students, but with their family members as well, such as parents, uncles, aunts, grandparents, or their current legal guardian. We open up the doors to our family centers and provide a safe space in which we take time to inform them of our services, our educational systems, and district-wide expectations, such as the OSU Portons Attendant Peace. Um, and we take time to be proactive in early intervention and crisis prevention and together build an understanding of who we are, not just as family centers, not just as individual schools, but as a Redwood City School District. And to share more about what that intake and interview process is like, I would like to pass it over to Michelle Ramon.
Thank you, Cynthia. Hello, board. Um, I'm Michelle Ramon. I'm part of the Communications Department. But my job, uh, with parent engagement also requires a close collaboration with the community schools. So we're going to talk about, um, what happened this school year with, uh, international students. what happened this school year with international students. So this school year has been an effective collaboration between departments at the district office. There has been early support for families eligible for McKinney, Vento, and academic placement offered in newcomer groups, and also asking the question right from the start, has your child gone through something traumatic? We didn't dig into it, but we did ask, and if the family said yes, we'll add a special note in the further email that streamlines notification between district office and school sites to notify, hey, you got a new family starting tomorrow, and this is an urgent case. Urgent means there's trauma. So in two days, three days, as opposed to weeks, that usually happened in the past, we were able to welcome the families and have resources available for them. All internationally, internationally recently arrived families are connected to services. However, in the case of Hoover, Kennedy, McKinley, and TAFT, I'm working together into implementing a manual that I wrote. This is for the Latinx newcomers interview. Actually, we recently presented that manual, Elsa, Lisa, and myself at CalSpro in San Diego. And it has a specific interviewing protocol to meet with a parent, learn about attendance barriers and adverse childhood experiences, and then share the notes as needed with a principal counselor or MTSS coordinator, and then refer to services and resources. Although the other schools do not follow that protocol itself, they do offer the same services for families and refer. So all our international students are seen, heard, welcomed, and we pay a lot of attention to trauma. So the interview process, I developed this trauma-informed culturally sensitive dialogue based on social work interviewing techniques and cross-cultural communication knowledge. To welcome parents, ease their vulnerability, to learn about their current housing situation, and one potential attendance barriers. One hour, one interview, all services in place from the beginning. We also gently scream for student pre-migration trauma, intrinsic trauma, and immigration grief. And then we provide a quick but fundamental orientation for parents, so they know from the beginning what the expectations are. Basically, because we do not assume that they are familiar with the American public school system, which is one in many in the world. And we have multifaceted success. I love sharing this with you. So first of all, parents know their newsletters and communications. They, we learn what language they prefer, and they get from the beginning. Also, parents know who and where to ask for help. They know what instruction looks like in our district, how the grades are communicated, and also what parent expectations are, not just parent-teacher conferences, but open house, back-to-school, and other opportunities specific to each site. Attendance barriers are addressed, and attendance expectations are discussed. And we are so happy to share with you that the families that have gone through this process with us report a gorgeous 94% of attendance. ACs, which are adverse childhood experiences, are reported from the beginning, and there are counseling referrals in place also from the beginning. So I'm going to share the mic now with Enrique.
I'm back. The fourth pillar for the community school model is collaborative leadership. And this is the pillar of work that creates the conditions for powerful and meaningful implementation of the community school model. And here on the screen, you have a quote from the Garfield admin team. So I'll give you a little moment to read that over. And while you're reading that, so this collaborative and shared leadership is very important, even at the site level, because it builds a climate of trust between the admin team, the staff, and the community to create coordinated efforts to really support the the community and the families at the school sites. And so along with that, us here at the community school, we've additionally, our team has been going for the past couple years. We've been working with the San Francisco Coalition of Essential Small Schools to continue our professional development in order to better strengthen our capacity to lead as equity-centered learning communities. And so one piece or one aspect of this work is our group, I Group sessions, where each of us presents and gets feedback from our critical friends in the group to think more expansively about authentic, passionate, and transformative equity dilemmas. So now I will pass it on to Elsa.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Elsa. I'm the coordinator over at TAFT Community School. And I'm going to shift a little bit to talk about other forms of collaborative leadership that our team has taken on in the last few years. One is the mentoring and slash coaching program. We saw this as an opportunity to support new members, and so with the expansion of community schools in 2021, experienced coordinators got linked with new coordinators to help build a network of support as they navigated a new role. So we held meetings that were bi-weekly, individually, and as a group. During these meetings, the two leads, myself and Elizabeth Calderon, planned and outlined supports such as systems, protocols, and templates that could be implemented back at sites. And really, the core focus of our work over the last two years has been, is a space to highlight what was working well, but also a chance to reflect on challenges and brainstorm new ways that we could support students and families and our family centers. And we've actually just wrapped up our second year of mentoring, so they have officially graduated. And, but we will continue to be of support as needed. And we really want to kind of highlight a lot of the, some of the work that we've been doing, and some of the shift a little bit more to discuss this collaborative work that began with community schools, the community schools department. And some, if not various, components of this has been integrated throughout the Redwood City School District, and it really began in the summer of 2020 in collaboration with the MTSS and Community Schools Director. We worked to develop screen team procedures, referral systems, and checkpoints for services. We basically used the tools that we had available, which was mostly Google. And we developed a lot of the templates for referrals. This was for academic, for mental health, for safety nets, and attendance to kind of streamline how we were receiving all of those service tracking and follow-ups. And so this collaborative effort that began that summer, we really sought to align our screen teams to bring to the table and really establish the collaboration amongst different leads. Everyone that was, you know, handling attendance, SSTs, mental health, and safety nets, because we needed to have all these people at the table to better understand a student and the services needed, because it's not just a child. A child is an extension of their family. They are an extension of their community. The community is part of our school. Since then, as we've outlined in our timeline, we've worked closely with the MTSS site coordinators, the mental health liaisons and administrators to further refine and standardize procedures and ensure that our least-reached students do not fall through the cracks. Over the years, a lot of these templates have been adjusted to reflect our practices, systems, and data tools. And this is kind of a highlight that we do continue to revisit with Stanford John Gardner Center, where we've also developed tools to capture our impact through surveys, narratives, and mental health data tools. And as always, our goal as a department is to continue continually reflect, fine-tune, and collaborate across departments and teams to better serve our students and families, because we can't do this by ourselves, and we cannot work in silos. And so I'd like to transition to Liz, who's going to talk a little bit more about the impact our efforts have had in the last few years.
Thank you, Elsa. Good afternoon. My name is Liz Calderon Garcia, and I'm the community school coordinator at Kennedy. So here is a quote that was taken directly from one of our family surveys, where a family, a parent is expressing their appreciation for the services that he or she received at one of our family centers. So our team collaborated with Kristin Geiser from the John Gardner Center to determine what data would provide us with both the breadth and impact of our work. This data has been collected to drop in logs, family surveys, and individual tracking tools. This year, we decided to explore gathering student perspectives using an interview tool. We will be reviewing this as a team and determining what revisions we may need to make. So the data you see reflects the services and resources that our community school coordinators have connected and supported our students and families with to break barriers that can interrupt students' access to their education. These numbers represent our first two trimesters across the seven community school coordinator sites. And this is for this current school year. Community school coordinators use site-level data to reflect with their teams and identify trends and gaps that may exist. At the end of the year, we gather teams from each site to reflect on data, celebrate successes, and determine the next steps. We call these days our data-based inquiry days. Our team implemented surveys for parents and caregivers. The data you see reflects services and resources that are communities, no. Sorry about that. So another piece of data that we use at both site level and across our teams is the parent-family survey. So here you will see our family's survey, and that is for any family that comes into the family center to receive different services, two to three, or even sometimes one. And then next, I'm going to also be showing you the survey results from our international families. So we also survey our families after they have gone through our process, our interview process, and connected them to resources. So we developed these surveys with intention to measure through the lens of our families the impact of our work and their perspectives regarding their experience in the family centers. This is an important piece of information for our teams as we strive to build a strong bridge between families and schools so that they feel welcome, supported, and a valued member of our community. I will now turn it over to Leila, and this is the international student survey data.
Good evening. Thank you so much for inviting me to be here. My name is Leila. I'm with College Advising Prep. And at College Advising Prep, we emphasize the development of the whole student. So we do that by creating nurturing learning environment that's rooted in emotional intelligence. We promote intangible skill sets, such as critical thinking, problem-solving, self-confidence. And we tailor our teaching approaches to allow for inquiry, to allow for curiosity, and to allow for significant gains, student attitude. So this is a breakdown of the overall I Ready grade level before placement. Over a period of 13 weeks, from October 2022 to February 2023, we saw about 114 students, grade second to eighth grade, with eighth grade being the majority of the population, so making up about 40% of the students that we saw. So over 75% of the students were three or more grade levels below. And almost 20% were actually five grade levels below before tutoring. So this slide here shows the percentage of students and their academic achievement within each achievement levels after receiving 13 weeks of tutoring. So as you can see, over almost 75% of the students made one or more grade level improvement during that 13 weeks of tutoring timeframe. And about over 72% actually met their annual, so their year goal, targeted goal, within that 13 weeks of tutoring. So beyond just these measurable academic outcomes, teachers and admin have noticed significant positive changes in students' behavior in the classroom. They've also noticed an accountability and a self-advocacy increase. Students are much more engaged in their own learning. They're taking accountability for their own learning. Their self-confidence have increased. They're much more participatory in class, raising their hands to answer questions, going through their thought process out loud. They're also much more collaborative as well, working very well with their tier peers, and stepping up and really helping their peers to understand concepts as well. So I want to thank Redwood City School District for really allowing my organization to play a small piece in helping to lessen the academic achievement gaps and really providing students with that strong foundation for that continued success. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Michelle.
Thank you, Leila. It is, if you ever get an opportunity to go see one of the sessions, it really is heartwarming and exciting to be in the room. So thank you. So as one of our fifth-grade students is looking into their future, as you can read in this quote, our community school team continues to reflect through an equity lens around our practices to improve the way we partner with our communities to address the barriers to learning and center the voices of our families and our students. So as we're looking forward, in order to build off of our current community school foundation, we have once again partnered with Stanford John Gardner Center to develop a theory of action that will drive our next steps for program improvement. Also, through our Stanford partnership, we will continue to refine our data collection practices to better understand the impact of our work and its effect on student success. As I believe you have heard, the Redwood City School District is the recipient of a state community grant that includes four of our community schools, Garfield, TAFT, Hoover, and MIT. These schools are part of the grant because their demographics met the requirement that was needed to be part of this. So the Redwood City School District will receive 5.5 million 225,000 over five years. And that money is, is to be used to expand the community school work at those sites and not to supplant. So there will also, there, each site, and you'll hear more about this in the future, but each, each site has certain amount that has been given to that site, and they have created their site plans, but all four of those schools will have an oversight committee that will be, that will have the community school coordinator, the site admin, teachers, some other school staff, but parents and students as well to do a cycle of inquiry on how the program is working and what they need to do next. And then we will also have some positions at the district office that to support the work across those four sites, so we can have alignment, and we can also provide some additional support for what they might need. We're also bringing in two social workers that will be working in the upstream program for those four sites, and so that's another big part of it. And of, and of course, we will share more with you later. But included in this slide are also some other steps that we're taking for our future work. As you heard before about our family engagement and our outreach plans, we will be expanding our, we are looking, looking to expand our family center hours so that we can more accommodate our families that, you know, like all of us are working, and so that's just a look right now. We're always building out our partnerships. We are also looking at some possible software that we might be able to use to help us with our data collection and our case management work. But it may be that educlimber provides this. We haven't taken a deep enough look. And we are also expanding to another community school, and that will be at Clifford. So I will now turn over the presentation to Enrique and Cynthia and Michelle. The popcorn? All right. Well, you've been hearing this word, "community." I mean, we even have it written on our shirt.
All right. Well, you've been hearing this word, "community." I mean, we even have it written on our shirts tonight. And really, we're just a small piece of that community. And so tonight, we want to show you the rest of that community that we love to serve so much. And for the last couple of weeks, we've just been working with Enrique to put this together. Well, mostly him.
Yeah, I mean, Cynthia said it. This is just going to highlight parents, students, staff, admin, partners who are, who are all at the community schools right now and just highlight the impact that the community school model has had in their, in their school site and with their families. So yeah. And then towards the end.
I gave it, but Michelle's.
Okay, yeah. At the end, there are a few pieces that are in Spanish. So Michelle Ramon was going to kind of summarize that at the end as well. Do we just, Jessie, do we just hit play or?
Oh.
We'll do it.
And just for the audience, and the translation would be, the father said, "I've recently arrived. I'm here with my son by ourselves." "I didn't expect this to be so hard, and I've been helped here." Student said, "I like it here in the family center because I have an assigned counselor. They are good people. We get a lot of support. This is a good place to study because people are kind to us. When I got here, someone helped me and assigned me a counselor. It has helped me."
Wait, no. Okay. So thank you all so much for giving us this space, this time. It, as you, I hope you can see, the program runs deep. And I have amazing people, truly amazing people that I get to collaborate and work with every day and have heart for our community and put our students and our families first. So we now open up for questions and anything else you'd like to share?
Great. Thank you. Thanks to everyone. And I'll go ahead and open it up for you guys to have any questions or comments.
Thank you for presenting on the community schools. You know, we get to hear about them a little bit from each of the school reports, but it's amazing to see the impact as the whole, you know, the whole program across it. I'd say we're lucky for being able to expand so many sites, but it's not really luck, right? I mean, it's deliberate planning that comes in and puts it together, and it's the leadership. It's the impact that all of you are having and the leadership of this district that has really made it possible. I mean, I think community schools and the services that they're providing, the impact that's shown on that data slide and just the narratives, podcasts, and stories that we hear just show how vital they are to the success of the families that use them, but really to the whole school community and everything that's there, that the focus on building that trust and relationship and you know, with families and schools and really, you know, creating that strong marriage between families and schools. It's, you know, it's, it's just awesome to be part of a school district that's, that is so focused on that and really brings that together. I want to thank everybody that came down here and presented. It was a lot. I was, I'm impressed at how smoothly the presentation went from person to person. It's clearly an indicator of how well you work with people across all of it. But Jocelyn and Leila are partners that came and presented tonight. Thank you so much for being here and representing the partnerships. You know, Enrique and Michelle Ramon, thank you for all the work that you do at the district. Really, really appreciate all of that. And then our, you know, our school coordinators, you know, the ELO program had the quadrant that said "the glue," and they were talking about the glue between, you know, our partnerships for extended learning, but really it is the glue of the whole community school. So thank you, Elsa, Liz, Cynthia, Yishal, and Jose for coming here and presenting tonight. And Lizette and Veronica, I know you're not here. We saw you on the video. Thank you for the work that you're doing as well. It's just, it's really important, and it really makes a big difference. I also would be, I want to make sure I acknowledge all the partnership that we have with the John Gardner Center. It is remarkable, even just for the few years that I've been on the board and been able to see the impact that they have on the work that we do, and then to be able to reflect back on it and help us improve all the way through. It is, it is such a strong partnership. It's really been helpful. It's part of what led us to being able to, you know, partner with over forty organizations and again, see so much impact with mental health, with all of the, all of the services that we add. Hearing that we're going from, you know, almost like twelve, twelve fifty students in the ELO to two thousand next year is amazing expansion. It's just, it's incredible how this program just keeps, we keep expanding it and moving it, you know, moving it forward. It is collaborative. You all collaborated great on this presentation, but the collaboration that goes on, not just, not just between the staff, right? Of course, the collaborative team that's looking at, you know, the whole team is, I forgot, I'm going to get this quote wrong, but it was the whole team works to improve the whole child or to the success of the whole child. But it just, you can really feel that moving and working through there. So thanks for presenting. I'm really, I'm proud of our community schools. I'm really glad to be part of a district that has so many of them and focuses on it and the services, the real support for our international families that come here, but really any family that needs it. And, you know, continue to do the great work that you're doing. I appreciate each and every one of you and the, and the services that you're providing every day.
Thank you.
I don't know if Mike is hard to follow or easy to follow, because I really can just say what he said. Yeah, thank you so much for that presentation, for all of you for being here. Boy, I think that it's pretty incredible, the number of things that happen on each of our school campuses, and particularly in the community schools. I don't, you know, you might feel like you're a little bit separated from the school because you're in a different building or whatnot, but it's so impactful what you guys do, and it's so important for our families. Thank you for the explanation on the change in language from newcomers to the international families too. I hadn't heard that yet. So I actually really liked that. I was talking to my son the other day about a new student who had just joined his class that was brand new to the United States. And in my head, I was like, oh, it sounds like he's a newcomer. And I actually felt like that's not really a nice phrase, probably. I don't know. It probably doesn't make this child feel welcomed. You're the new guy. So I thought that was really a neat, a neat change in language there. I love the mentoring and coaching of the new coordinators too. And I was just curious, how long is that program? Like, is it a year? I think you might have said two years. What kind of time commitment is that, like per week or per month or per year?
Well, it has been a work in progress for two years, and that's how long the program was for them, two years. But it, they were, you can speak to it. They meet individually with their community school coordinator partner, but they also meet as a mentoring team. And so their commitment was, it's about once, once a week? Or every other week?
Every other week. Weekly?
Yes.
First year and then bi-weekly the second year.
Awesome. And it really was developed from just a spark of how can we support new people that are coming in?
I love that. And I think that's something that our district does really well at is mentoring and coaching. And it just seems like it's in every department, and I think it's fantastic that you guys are doing that too. I think that's really probably a position that's easy to throw somebody at and just walk away from and, you know, go for it kind of thing. So I think that the impact that you guys have is so important. And Michelle, like you were talking, Michelle Ramon, the ninety-four percent attendance rate is incredible. So I want, David was looking at buying a gong recently, and I think we should like ring the gong for that. That's just fantastic. So thank you, everyone, for your time here.
Thank you.
Plus one. Tell the wonderful things that my colleagues have already shared. Thank you for coming out in force, the army of people who help our students and their families. So wonderful to hear more details about the supports that we offer. Really neat to hear about the partnership with Stanford and just really a focus on a data-driven approach to helping. So I really, I'm one of the data guys, and so I'm always appreciative of when I see the quantified approach and to it, really pretty happy about the tutoring data that we can see here and the clear impact that that makes on the students. There's some fantastic improvements and to note that there was peer teaching happening, metacognition, having the students talk things through out loud, like that's just, that's just fantastic. One quick bit of feedback, the ACEs reported link in the deck I didn't have access to, so I need to request access to. So hopefully can check that out. There was an invitation to observe a session. I'm a little curious.
Threw it out there.
What, what that looks like, maybe you could follow up with me offline. I'd be curious to hear a little bit more about that. In terms of when we meet with parents at the beginning to set expectations, I thought that was great. One point of feedback that I had heard for a lot of international families is that expectations of the school system are, can be a little bit different. And there's just sort of an assumption that you can drop your kids off at school and don't really need to engage a lot and they'll be okay. And that it's, there's an expectation of much more intensive engagement here. And so I think setting those expectations will help set up those kids for success. I am curious about, do we share specific expectations with how long their kids are expected to take to achieve English proficiency?
No, because the expectations are, is sort of an orientation. So it's quite basic. Just as you said, you just don't drop the child at school. You, you're here, but it's a validation of their school system and our school system. So we show what, what instruction looks like. And then sometimes on a follow-up, we do explain grade levels and we go all the way up to university and then we start pushing the A through G requirements, although they do not belong to us. But so they can have them in their vocabulary and in their mindset and their goals from the beginning. So that's part of what we're doing.
That makes sense. I would just, I would love to make sure that we get to a point where we, as a district, can align on some, some goals of making sure that all of our children, as they enter our district, quickly become fully English proficient. And we share those expectations with parents as well. So they can hold their kid accountable. They can hold us accountable, right? For their, their child making forward progress on that. And then just finally, a note on the software evaluation front. We're in Silicon Valley. We've got a lot of nerds around here. Just curious if there's, there's some help we can tap from the community and the like to help with things like software evaluations, because we've got people who do that for a living around here. So we may be able to find some volunteers for that.
Thank you.
Cool. Thank you so much for your time.
And again, thank you. Again, plus three, four. It really is easy to follow what Mike said. I don't want to repeat because obviously I don't want to make this longer, but throughout the presentation, while you guys were talking, obviously, we as a board read the slides or presentation, and then the video. We heard the word welcome, trust, review, brainstorm. So again, it's all very important. You guys all collaborate very well. And I can't just express anymore that we are very thankful, again, just like, I forget who said it. I think Janet. You guys are all over, obviously, almost at all school sites, and you guys do make a difference. Again, everyone makes a difference, but it's that person that the parent connects with or the student connects with where they feel welcome, they feel safe, and they trust the student. So again, without that, perhaps they might not be able to move forward. So thank everyone for your support for all of our students. And let's see. And kudos to all those that achieve higher levels after the tutoring program. That was actually very nice to see. So thank you. Thank you so much. And I'll pass it on to Dr. Baker.
And Michelle, in 25 years, this has really gone full circle. I mean, it is amazing compared to when it started when you were teaching at Taft. I know I was envious because Hoover didn't get it and Taft did, and that's where I was at the time. But the remarkable work that's going forward just within the last few years is amazing. I know we had some difficulties there for a while, and some of you board members do know that when we lost our director. And, you know, trying to find someone new and then tapped you to, to take it on because you actually started with it as a classroom teacher and then took it forward as a site administrator at Taft. And what you see now is not what we had previously. So I know there is a neighboring district that I was not aware that came over to visit until superintendented him. I said, "You did?" I said, "I had no idea." But it was because, it was because they got a planning grant. They got the planning grant. And I said, "I heard you got the planning grant." And I said, "How did you get that planning grant?" I guess, talking to some of you out in the audience. And not that I'm envious or of my colleague, but I'm very pleased that, you know, what the work that you are doing. But I'm I'm very pleased that, you know, what the work that you are doing is also being mirrored in other districts. They've got a long, a long ways to go. It's Samhail Foster City. That's not the planning grant. And they have a long ways to go. There are some, definitely some challenges there. But I think with a model like ours, they definitely can get there. The other piece that I just want to bring forward, because of the community schools. And it was called Redwood City twenty twenty. Michelle, what was it before Redwood City twenty twenty? Yeah, Redwood City. Thank you.
We're the historians, John.
I guess so. We go back. So but anyway, this, that was created from community schools because they saw the work that was community schools were doing in Redwood City at the time. And that's when Redwood City two thousand started. And now they're Redwood City together. So a lot has come from community schools. The other piece that board members, you need to understand, even though if you, there is not a community school at one location, like Henry Ford, if there is some family in need, they can go to one of the other ones that nearest, that's nearest to them. So it's, it is available. But the work that has been done, I think, within the last three years, definitely surpasses what I ever envisioned could happen. So it's now time to take it on the road.
Oh, gosh.
I know, I know. But 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 what I'm saying is to get the, you know, to continue the funding.
Yeah.
Is to get, I know there's, there's definitely a conference coming up in Philadelphia where
I'm going.
Where you're going to be going. But the next step, and I know, but the next step is you'll let you know now CSBA and AXA is probably the next steps to go to, to do the presentation so that we can get it out there. And then that's where the thunders come. So I want to say thank you to everyone who came this evening to share your experiences, to share the talents that you have yourself for making this a better program than it was previously. And Michelle, thank you for taking it on because I know you were hesitant, but hey, you were there at the beginning when it started. So so you took it to a different level, though. It's at a different level now.
Thank you.
Where others will want to come and emulate. So be prepared, but we'll go out forward and and I will talk to Jorge because I I just got some information regarding the CSBA conference and the AXA conference that I go to that will be coming up in the in the fall.
Okay.
So that we can share what we're doing. Definitely help others so they can come and visit and 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 see. And then we go out and seek the funding from those people who have been there. All right. Thank you all so much. You did a great job.
Can I do one more acknowledgement?
Sure.
I just have to acknowledge Ofelda. She didn't present with us, but she's the one doing all the contracts. She's the one really working behind the scenes, the Sam Trans program, the whole thing. So I just want to acknowledge her.
Stand up, Ofelda. She's right back there in the back. Can you see her wave your hand? Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to go. We have a little bit longer, but you don't have to stick around. I know you all have early mornings tomorrow.
Bye.
Good night.
So moving on to item twelve consent items. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor? Item thirteen point one, approval of CBAS waiver for substitute teachers for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
This is an annual request as an action item to approve this opportunity for individuals to be substitutes and and hurry the process along during the state-approved time period of a CBAS waiver.
Are there any questions?
No comments. I think we do this every year. Yeah, I'll move to approve.
A second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. Thirteen point two, approval of Prop twenty-eight expenditure plan for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
So I was going to prepare some slides and John said, no. Yeah, because we had another, you know, amazing presentation that would have been impossible to follow. So I mostly would like to know if you have any questions. We have one of our planners here in the audience with us as well. We're super, super excited about this opportunity to bring more music and steam into the schools. And so we haven't fully staffed all of the positions yet, but we're working hard at that. We have almost every school with a STEAM teacher and almost every school with a music teacher. We're using the Prop twenty-eight funding to hire. But of course, it doesn't cover all of the positions. And so we're supplementing with LCAP funding as well as school sites are putting in some of their funding as well to get as close to full-time people as they can. And then we are using some additional funding for the instructional materials funding to buy the music and or the instruments as well as the some of the STEAM lab components for maker spaces. We're bringing people together for planning. We've got, you know, amazing people who are working at setting aside time to plan what the program will look like from grades four through eight in our district for the first time, where before we just had either our itinerant music teachers who did an amazing job, but weren't able to provide the service that they wanted to provide at all the school sites. And the STEAM just also sort of sporadically different sites depending on the additional funding. And so now we can really have district-wide programs. And we're very excited about that and be happy to answer any questions for you.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say this is exciting and it's really fun to be able to spend money that's given to us by the state and by the voters. And I I think this one's really exciting, too. Prop twenty-eight had no organized opposition, opposition to it. So that was, I think it speaks volumes to just how important people understand the arts and music education is. So I'm excited that we're able to expand some of that here in our district. So.
I'd agree. I think it is pretty exciting that we're we're able to do that. It looks like we're adding about seventeen positions to cover it from. It's pretty clear that about a million dollars a year isn't going to cover all of that. So we should expect to see, you know, as you mentioned, LCAP, general fund and site funding, but it's it's nice to know that we're pulling that together and that we'll be able to offer these sort of district-wide programs. I'm looking forward to our music program. I think it's next week, which perhaps might become one of the beneficiaries as we supplement it going forward. So.
Can't wait to hear all the great stuff that comes out of this.
And again, I don't have any comments. Obviously, it's really great to see that this is going to be offered at many of our schools. So it's, again, it's really exciting. So with that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Thirteen point three, approval of local inter- inter-agency agreements to provide education and training to credential candidates.
Thank you. So as you know, in our efforts to hire a robust workforce, one of the options that is blessed by the California teaching credentialing programs are internships and our local universities, actually near and far because of online programs, allow for this opportunity in which a person who holds a bachelor's in his past various tests and has had experiences may gain an approval from a university to be an intern. And so it is not a fully credentialed teacher, but it is essentially one rung under in the sense that at the end of the nine months, this individual will earn a teaching credential. So it's a wonderful experience for the the person, they're attending classes meanwhile, and we have a teacher of record in the classroom. And so this item tonight is being brought to you. We partner with twenty-eight universities near and far, five more locally that provide internships, residencies, and then student teaching opportunities. And this year of twenty-two, twenty-three, we served twenty-five semester units, meaning that one teacher could serve two semesters or one person could be here, one intern could be here for one semester or student teacher. And so it's really building up our workforce over time because the idea is that they meet, choose, and love our CST. And they have been provided with a great mentor as well along the way. So tonight, this item represents one of those universities, San Francisco State, and the ability to have an internship. This is an ongoing relationship. It's just every two to three years, our contract or MOU expires and we need to renew it. And they all come at different cycles. So which is why you have one here, one in October. I wish it would be calibrated, but that that isn't the case. So tonight, this item is from San Francisco State. Any questions?
Wendy, can you remind me with the internships, are they, do they have to commit to a certain number of years beyond the internship with us or?
So there's different levels. There are student teachers that are only here for either a semester or a year. There are interns which stay the entire nine months and there's no obligation for them to be hired, although if it's a win-win, it's a great partnership and and result. And then there are residents. So that's a different classification where there is an agreement that the individual will be hired at the end of their residency, which is after nine months. And those relationships right now are with Alder and San Jose State for bilingual and special ed and now middle school opportunities. Thank you for passing that last time.
So I guess I have some obvious questions. There's a bit of a teacher shortage. We seem to have trouble finding folks to fill all of our slots and the intern position turning into a full credential seems like a nice pathway. Do we have a consensus that this is working pretty well as a a path to bring new teachers into the district? And if so, are there ways that we can double down on this and do more of this and partner with more universities? Just, I'm asking out of ignorance because I'm the new, new.
No, it's great questions always. So really, there are two ways that an individual becomes an intern, and that's either seeking out their own university or working with us and we give them menus of options that they can pursue on their own. But it's really an individual decision based on the price tag of the university semester units required and so forth. So it is a great pathway. I know that we are striving to hire fully credentialed teachers always with experience. That's ideal. But we've also been known for our great mentoring programs, induction and so forth. And we have a strong mentoring program for interns. So yes, the number has grown. I can pull that data for you if you're interested to know over time for interns in general. Know that actually it could be a five-year process for one person. They could start with emergency credentials that are offered by the state for two years, then have three years of an internship before they're fully credentialed. However, they will have had five years of teaching experience, which is which is helpful with mentors along the way. So the data, so there's different data that I can pull between emergency credentials and then internships on the journey of the teacher.
Yeah, I think mostly it's just acknowledging that I've heard pretty consistently, we'd like to get more teachers in the district, right? Learning about what pipelines we are using, what's working, what's not working and for things that are working, like how we can do even more of that. Try and help solve the problem. That's really just the high-level query.
Absolutely.
We can, we can sit down off offline to discuss. I mean, this, this sounds great. So I don't want to take us too off.
No, that's fine. Really, what's what's great about this process, and and I'll be brief here, is that this, this process really attracts local individuals that live in this area. But what we are actually is reaching out far and wide nationally and internationally. We just made six offers for international candidates to join us just this week. And so what, and these individuals will also go through this process. So we've definitely made more strides this year than ever before for a variety of reasons, the teacher shortage, the increase of many, many positions between special ed and general ed, which is great for our students and then our normal attrition. So I'll be happy to do that.
And really just my comment on that, I just want to say thanks to all the teachers, the ten-year mentor teachers that actually collaborate with all the new new or intern interns to actually guide them and to, you know, teaching and then all the good stuff that happens in the classroom. So with that, can I get a motion to approve? Item thirteen point three.
I'll move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. Okay, so now moving on to item fifteen, Board and Superintendent Report. Who would like to start?
I'll start. So I did the LCAP committee. That was, that was fun, engaging some more there, learning about the LCAP process and also had a meeting with the iReady team to go and talk about data and views. I learned a lot actually about dashboards that I had never seen. So a bunch of the queries that I had about, hey, is it possible for the district to show me data about student progress in different formats that that I haven't seen? It turns out that there are actually already built dashboards in iReady for a bunch of that stuff. So it was just helpful to me to know what kinds of data I can request and how. And also had some product feedback for them about maybe offering a trustee-friendly view so that trustees could go in and interact with the data without getting exposed to individual student confidential information, right? Just so we could learn more about how the schools are doing. As a fun little side project, I actually built a open source board docs importer to be able to start building a chatbot that I and maybe at some point other members of the district can use to interact with district information. So going and crawling all of the public information about our district. And so you could go and ask it like, what's for lunch tomorrow? Or, you know, different interesting things that are in flight. So that was kind of fun because everyone's got to be playing with the cool new AI. So I've been playing with that. And I also chatted with a parent who's trying to get into the Mandarin immersion program. And this is a parent we've we've talked about before, which we we have meeting to to talk about the MI program. Cool. That's it for me.
Yeah, I was at the LCAP meeting and iReady team meeting that David had mentioned there. Also went to a school recognition event at the County Office of Education. Measure Youth Citizens Oversight Committee met, although I did have to leave early because my high school senior had her last orchestra performance. And, you know, sometimes you just got to jump to those. And also the teacher induction colloquium at Henry Ford. So I just wanted to say thank you to Nicole Crawford for running the program, the mentors, everyone that supports the program. And of course, congratulations to all the candidates and particularly the second-year candidates that are graduating from the program. It was a beautiful day and it was a really nice ceremony.
And so I attended a Citizens Bond Oversight Committee with John and Rick. I think we're both there, too. And John LeBlanc gave an overview on the roles and responsibility of the committee that he had presented to us as a board couple, couple meetings ago, I believe. And then the Oversight Committee also reviewed the annual report that we approved in our consent calendar this evening. And I attended briefly, I stopped in for the first half or so of the Future Chef competition that was held at Henry Ford. It was, I think it was eight students were there and they did a great job. All chopping and cooking and the parents were all there with their cameras. It was really fun. So and then I hopped over from the MUB to the field and went to the induction colloquium that afternoon also, which is always really nice and really proud of our district for continuing to support that program. I was at the Kent Awards with Cecilia and John and Clifford received an award for their work with NUA. So Jude and Tiffany had a bunch of staff there and some parents and it was a really nice evening celebrating Clifford School. And then, um, gosh, same day as the Future Chef and the induction program, it was a busy day. I was at North Star for their Festival of Social Studies and I got to teach a couple of workshops on Unearthing the Mysteries of Union Cemetery. So I had two classes. It was, my first class was third through eighth grade. And my second class was sixth through eighth grade. And I gave a brief history on the cemetery. And I realized, I don't know how many of you know this. A Mr. Horace Hawes actually donated the money for the cemetery. Are we aware of this? Yeah. There's a really great history behind Hawes and and his donation of the $500 to purchase the land. So we went over a brief history, some of the significant figures from our local, actually, and women's rights movement that are buried in the cemetery. And then the students each, as a group, I brought in some pictures of some of the headstones from the cemetery and they spent time just studying the headstones and making observations on them and making just what what can they tell about the person just from reading their headstone, what kind of inferences they can make about that person's life? They had some really great insights and I was really proud of of some of the the thoughts they had, really thoughtful questions they came up with, like things that this headstone leaves them wondering about the person or the life they live. So it was really, I was really proud of them and it was a lot of fun. So I enjoyed that. That's all.
Thank you. So I attended the Superintendent Advisory Committee, which we do through Zoom. Thank you. Um so I attended the Superintendent Advisory Committee, which we do through Zoom. And because we are trying to get a lot more of the Spanish-speaking parents. Dr. Baker and the communication um team um had. An excellent idea to actually invite those parents that are unable to make our Zoom meetings to meet in person at the school sites. So we have now met at Taft and at Hoover. Um the first time we had, I think, four parents. And I forget Tuesday, um seven or eight showed up. So that was really great. Um to hear. And so we talked about enrollment and then I forget because I didn't, I didn't bring the notes that I took there. So um again, it's it's great. They get the information. Again, talk about. Not necessarily the international students or parents, but the parents that actually um come to the Superintendent Advisory Committee. Actually have some kind of connection at the school site and they get the information. Michelle gave a really good presentation and actually helped the parents understand. Again, what it's like, almost like what she did with the the process. Um is not just dropping off your kid. This is how you navigate the uh system here in the United States. So that's uh very important for them to learn. Um I attended the Redwood City Together meeting. And Raphael, um let me see. Talked about their fundraising report and calibration. I will go into um detail, but if you guys want. Um I can pass that information to Dr. Baker and then he can forward it to you guys. And they are in the process of. What do I say? Accepting or adopting an equity statement. And I think that's it for that day. Um again, also the Ken Awards, yay for Clifford. Um and the NUA program. And I also attended the induction colloquium. I do want to say again, thank you, thank you to all those teachers for helping the other teachers that are actually coming into our district. Everybody was very excited. We actually sat down around the tables and um. One of the new, I don't know how new, I forget, um teacher talked about four questions that they had at the middle of the table. Where they actually um share with whoever was around the table um their experience in the classroom. So that was um really good. And I believe that is it for me. Dr. Baker.
Everything's been mentioned. And I went to, with the exception of this morning, and that's this led from the meeting we had. At Hoover uh with with the with the parent today in regard to um. The meeting that we had with the Latino moms that were there with us. And Liz was there also because we were talking about reading and what that's going to look like next year. Um but she brought some other information to myself and to Michelle to consider. And uh at the meeting, I asked the question, how could we get more parents? We tried doing evenings. We tried now doing mornings, but I think the next piece is to do another survey. But what I heard was it's probably best for me to hold those meetings during cafecitos. That's when I'm gonna get the biggest bang. Or show people to show up. So we're gonna probably try that. We, the mother today uh from Hoover said she, you know, is very grateful for everything that we're doing and being out at the school sites. And informing parents. But she asked us if there was something more that we could do to get the parents involved. So we'll work with her with with that group and a couple of their parents to see what we can come up with. Because it's very important for them to be involved. We also told them about the board meetings, especially this mom, about the board meetings. You can uh definitely come on virtually. There is translation. And you're welcome to speak to the board at any time uh that you'd like at the beginning of a board meeting. You get three minutes with them with Spanish because there's translation at six. So we talked about that. And so we'll see how we can get this moving in that direction. So uh it was a good meeting this morning. And um from that meeting, I guess there's, there's another one coming up, right? Sometime in June uh where they're gonna, it's it's a larger group coming. So I'll get some more information, you know, from that. And um I will have the pleasure of visiting some kindergarten classrooms tomorrow. So let's see um. At one of our school sites. So let's see how that goes. I haven't talked kindergarten or been in a kindergarten classroom in a long time, although since COVID, I haven't been in there. But uh I've always gone in the past. So it's the first time in quite a while. It'll be fun.
Great, thank you. Um and then with that, um item fourteen, fourteen point one recognition, oh, sorry. I don't know where I've been. I'm like, yeah, right. Um sixteen correspondence. I know, let's see.
I have an email from Erin asking about access to my Redwood City School District AI. I will follow up with them offline.
And I think for me, it was, um I did get an email from Familias Unidas and. Help the city tutoring. And so basically reaching out to see if um I can sign some of the certificates. So I think that was it as far as um correspondence. So um and then with that, if you guys don't have anything else, moving on to item seventeen. Other possible business suggested items for future agenda.
The only thing that I have is the offsite. We have a date that everybody can do, June twenty-third.
Great, thank you. Um and then for item eighteen point one, uh changes to the board calendar. Obviously, on the uh brush and L, we did see that the closed session for tonight was added. Is there anything else?
Hmm, there'd be nothing else, no.
Okay, great. Thank you. And so with that, um it is eight thirty-seven. And does somebody want to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I will move to adjourn.
I'll second. All those in favor? Thank you.